Need to tell you that.
No.
Are we ready?
Let's call the meeting to order. Please rise and turn.
But allegiance to the black and the United States of America and to the Republic where it is standing, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the wall, please?
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Mayor Stanley.
Here.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yeah.
Mayor Morgan.
Yeah.
Also let it be known that Town Manager Greg Dunham, Assistant Town Attorney Trey Nazaro, Chief Jones, our Acting CFO Mark Bymaster and myself are also present.
Thank you very much. We've been presented with our minutes from the July 14th meeting. Are there any questions, comments, changes or additions?
I move to be accepted as presented.
For now.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes. We have some new police officers and I would like to have them introduced. Chief?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. So present with us is Alan Gonzalez. Alan retired from PBSO after 18 years and he's been serving in law enforcement since 2005. We're glad to have him. He served in a variety of capacities and he's been a great addition to the force so far. So, thank you and welcome.
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 Vincent Tina Nowicki is our most recent employee. She was hired Monday. So, I welcome her as well. She comes from the Federal Law Enforcement Division, worked for the United States Marshal Service and the Naval Service. So, we're welcoming her as well.
Okay.
Well, we've heard great things about both of you actually, so we're delighted that you're here and going to be working for the town. Alan's already been serving and of course Tina will be getting her feet on the ground shortly. There is another officer, is there not?
Yes, sir. We were unable to have him present at this meeting. We would like to be able to bring him next month. But Acel Hassan, who came to us from Connecticut, served in the Army as a police officer there as well. He started with us back in June and he was unable to make it due to other, you know, arrangements.
And Alan, thank you. I know you had a late night, I believe. So, thank you for coming in. It's really important that we get to see you in this context and view to see us. I think it brings the Police Department, Town Staff and the Commission a little closer together. So, thank you very much for both of you for coming.
And you certainly don't need to stay if you would choose to leave, so.
Yes. Yes, you don't have to stay for the day.
Right. Yeah, go home.
Are there any other changes to the agenda, Mr. Don?
Yes, sir. I'm going to, under the manager's report, just talk about lights in our parking area here around Town Hall. And that's it.
Okay, thanks. Very good. All right, our next meeting is September 8th. However, it will be at 4:00 PM because it will be followed by the tentative budget hearing at 5:01 PM for anyone who wishes to attend. Final budget meeting will be September 27th at 5:01.
Mayor, we need to make a change on November 10th. The November 10th meeting, Veterans Day falls on the 11th. So, that means the holiday is going to be on the 10th. So, we need to either move it, we did this last year, either move it to the Thursday, the 9th, or Monday, the 13th. So, which is best for y'all?
How many different?
Whatever you pick. Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, the 9th. Thursday, the 9th then. Thank you.
November's meeting, November 9th, which is a Thursday at 9:00 AM. Thank you. Public comment? Anyone wish to speak? If not, we do have Rhonda. Is Rhonda?
Disappeared, didn't I?
You're blending into the police officers.
Fantastic. That's my dream come true. Good morning, everybody. Rhonda Geiger with the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics, just here for my annual check-in to remind everybody that we're here. We're here to answer any questions you might have. We're here, I was just talking with the police officers about trainings. We're here to do live trainings. I heard the video. It's getting a little old for some people, so I'm not just here. I've heard that from other people. So, I'm happy to come out. If anybody, if you guys want to schedule live trainings, I'm happy to come out at any time. I work, you know, I just did a whole bunch of them in Toquesta from, you know, after hours for the police officers and that, people that work different hours. So, please just reach out if that works better for everybody. If you want to do a live training, that's part of, part of our, part of our mission is to reach out to communities and do that. But otherwise, just make sure that you remember we're here. I've given you all my business card, couple little handouts. We just really want to remind everybody that we want to be proactive. We want to be an agency that people come to before there's a problem. We want to be the agency that addresses things ahead of time instead of after the fact. So, please remember that we're here and we're always happy to help.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a great weekend.
You too. Town Manager Report, Box of Slay update.
Okay, thanks Mayor. I want to ask Anthony, step up here. I've passed you out the site plan for the water code. We just want to give you an update as to where that ends. Saying the, oh, I guess, yeah, that would be recording you. I'm not.
Correct.
But anyway, so we just wanted to give you an update on it. And Anthony can kind of fill in the details, but most of the landscaping in that, as you first pull into the guardhouse is in. And with the exception of areas around the sign. So, if you remember, we're moving the sign from its current side, the north side to the south side. And there's a couple of reasons for that. FPNL put in a new pole right there and it's right in the middle of the sign on that side. And they did that a long time ago. And there's an old pole that they still need to take out. So, I'm on them about that. And there's a, but there's a meter that's on that pole that has to be removed. And the meter goes to the Point Beach Welcome Sign that you see over there by.
Under US1.
Yeah, so we're working through that and as soon as they can, they'll pull that pole out. And then as they finish the new sign that they're working on and take the old sign out, they'll finish the landscaping there in the entryway. And that's really all that's left to do at the entry around the guardhouse. And that really is mainly sod and then low level.
Ground cover, yes, sir.
Right, so they have started landscaping on one of the houses now. So, their first house, they're starting to put the landscaping in of the three that are under construction. They did remove the stop sign. We went out and looked at it. Engineers come out, remember the complaint they had that there were too many stops.
Sure, on the yield or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, and so we agreed. I mean, the stop sign coming out, as you're coming out on Avenue Mossaway and around the curb right there by Mr. Canfield's house, that strange intersection, how it stops. We took that out. It doesn't need to be there. And so, we have, now we have a new one, a new stop sign. And this area and this area. So, we had to have two stop signs there because there's so much traffic coming in there from three different streets. We have a mess there, we did. So, we took the other stop sign out. We did put a sign up that is, that warns of stop ahead because people are just not used to it yet. So, we've done that. And again, the stucco and the roofing at the guardhouse are done. So, that entry feature is pretty much completed except the little landscaping that's left to do after the signs were completed. And then in the area, the public area around, roundabout, I think you've had the most recent look at it.
Yeah, they installed the oak, which is similar to the one we have up front. It's really beautiful. I mean, it's really full. And they did all the ground cover. They were installing most of the mulch around all the new plantings that they already installed. They have a lot of ground cover that they have to finish doing a front section next to the guardhouse. But the rest of it is all pretty much done. The only thing that he told me this morning, when I spoke to him this morning, is that's left in front of the signs where there are now. It's just pretty much sod and some ground cover that they're going to put around the sign. But other than that, the way the entry is now, if you go over there and see it, it's almost pretty much complete.
Also, what I didn't say is where their gate is right now, you're familiar with that. On either side of that, they had fencing and it's in. And above the vegetation that buffers both those fences is also in. And so, what they're also doing is beginning to, they put, they put the fencing in between the public area and the houses. And they're putting the landscaping in along those fences right now. So, I think that pretty much covered it.
Yeah, they're installing a majority of the sod that they have for the common areas. That's all been done yesterday. And they had, I think he said he has two or three more trucks coming in today in regards to the rest of the sod that needs to be laid for that main entry area. That's going to be exposed to the public. But pretty much all the fishtail palms and everything for lining of the fencing, it's all installed already.
And the wall. So, you'll notice when you go by that wall, the fishtail palms are about 15 feet tall. They were originally going to put eight to 10 foot ones in there. They weren't available, so they put, so they bought the.
Larger ones.
And when you're inside there, you don't see Walmart. I mean, you can't see Walmart, so.
So, construction vehicles for the rest of this project are all going to come in just that main entrance there now? They don't, wow, okay.
I went over there yesterday. I mean, it's a big improvement from the last time I was over there. The only thing I noticed was the pump house for the Gulfstream Golf Club is still pretty visible.
Yeah.
I think it put something.
Oh, we could have.
I think it'd be, you win a lot of friends by doing that. I think it's a little too visible. It's a utility building. It's ugly.
I just want to remind you that, you know, when they're done with that, the staff will do a walk through. And if there are things that need to be done, we'll tell them what needs to be done. And that's a good point. The other thing that I'll say is, remember there's four royals on the south side as you're coming in. The original plan was to put two of those on the other side. But when we moved the gumbo limbo, which was on the plan, that gumbo limbo is big and it takes up a lot of room. And the two royals would have been right up to the electric facilities. And we decided to leave them on that side. So, you may hear people that say, why are there no royals on the other side? Well, that's, that's the reason.
Good, thank you.
A question, Mayor. I know that I didn't attend the last meeting, but I listened to the recording video. I know you're going to have some meeting between residents and the town. A lot of the issues been addressed, have you think?
The Vice Mayor and I met with some members of Box of Slay with staff. We had a lengthy meeting. I think much has been done since that meeting to assuage some of the concerns.
Thanks.
Anything else? If not, lights in the parking area.
Yes. So, these, these lights that you see out here in front and one over there at the PD, those are over 30 years old. They were in when Captain Hasley came to work here, right? And so, we can't get parts to them. When they, you know, go bad, we can't, we can't fix them. And they're starting to rust at the bottom. The tornado that hit last year tore this one over here at the side of the exit from the parking lot. And so, we're talking about replacing those. And we are replacing them with FPNL lights, FPNL lights. And they're, they're just like the ones that are in Place Ossola at this, at this point in time. I think those, are those concrete?
Yes. The poles that they're going to be using is a tapered concrete pole that they recommended to use. I was going to ask them to use fiberglass, but after she explained to me the deterioration because of, you know, we're so close to the saltwater, it wouldn't be beneficial to use a fiberglass because then it starts exposing the fiberglass and then it starts weakening it. So, she said it's best just to use the concrete poles. They'll last a little longer than having the fiberglass ones in.
I thought it best to at least tell you before we did that, I mean, these, I mean, when these go, I mean, we can't replace them, so.
Is that one of the?
That's one.
Yeah, that little octagon shaped looking thing that's out there by the edge of the road.
My question would be, why would we continue with the type of light we add throughout?
Because those are $10,000 apiece.
I know, but I, no.
Yeah, I mean, how many do I need?
We need, we need a total of 12.
Oh.
Yep. Changes the whole subject now, doesn't it?
Again, I'd say these are FPNL lights that are much, much cheaper.
Here's how it's going to work. I mean, so we have an idea how the process works and she explained it thoroughly to me. They come out, they do the assessment. Well, actually, she does it in-house. They have their designers put it together. I give her a drawing of where the lights are and where we need them to be, but, which actually are all in the same spot anyway. But they have to have all that stuff put into a plan design so she can give us a cost. The LT1 program that they have has to have that all included in the encumbrance. So, that way we have an idea what the cost of the construction for the boring of the stuff because they don't pay for that. Then we have to pay for that upfront. And then in turn, they give us the equipment and then we do monthly payments on the equipment. We no longer own the lights. We don't have to have responsibilities for the maintenance of the lights. If they go bad, we call them, hey, your light is no good. Can you come and fix it? They come and take care of it. They take the metering off of the building that we have now because everything is metered off of the building in-house. They take that off and put it on a transformer and put a can on it and they meter it from a separate can. Then we get billed just like we do for the lights out and open. So, then we no longer have any more responsibilities of the lighting that's in the parking lot. If there's any issues, we call them. They come and take care of it. We reduce the maintenance costs of having to take care of it. Hopefully, we can find some. Because right now, I tried to call for a replacement of that actual style of bulb. That's aluminum cast and they don't even make that anymore. No one makes it. I've reached out to people that deal with just aluminum strictly and they said we don't touch it.
Anthony, I agree with you.
Yeah, it needs to be replaced. Question is, do we give up the aesthetic value for a cheaper product? And I'm in favor of spending extra money.
The only other problem is, is that I called Brayton Signs, Barton Signs, which is the people that we ordered the lights from originally. I've called them four times and they won't return my phone calls, even just for signage. They won't even return my phone.
I mean, we can, we can hold off to see, I mean, if the Commission wants to contemplate doing that, then we need to dig a little deeper to make sure that we can get the parts for the, for the lights that we have in the core area.
You know, we spent six, seven, eight, nine, 10 million dollars to bury lines. We're going to spend probably 18, 19 million redo the roads and then we're going to put in an expensive light.
That's why we came to you today.
Is there a way to do the ones you see and then do FPNL like in the back here? I mean, when they're like right in front of the Town Hall, maybe do the expensive one.
The only ones that we have in front of Town Hall are the two at Police Department and then the two that are right here on the side of the building.
Right, so that's five.
I was going to add a third one right here at the front entrance because when I come in for emergency calls at night, this area here doesn't have any lighting.
So.
Point reason is because the two that are on the building here that are attached to it that we can't remove because we won't be able to replace them with anything. Those are the same style of lights as what's there now that's out front. So, unless we can come up with an idea of having a different light fixture to go on the building here to get illumination on this side of it, I mean, that would be the only other alternative. But I thought it would be more beneficial just to have actual parking lot lights outside of the entrance so you can physically see it.
And I totally understand the, your comments. Absolutely. So, so again, that's why I came to you today. And that's another suggestion, like you mentioned. So, let me talk with Anthony. And I mean, we've lived a long time without having a light right there.
Well, that's, that's not a big deal. We can put a light there. That's just one more. So, see what, I'm just talking about for aesthetic reasons, doing the ones in the front.
Sure.
Nice and the ones in the back.
Okay.
Just the concrete poles.
Okay, yeah. So, we'll go back and we need to investigate whether we can.
Do you agree with that?
Even get parts.
30 years.
That's a whole nother separate problem.
Correct, because the new poles that we have that are in the core, I only have one replacement pole and a light fixture right now. Because I've had to use.
We have two places that.
Two different lights.
That I, we need lights on the block between Apollo and Gulfstream on Lakeview and Banyon.
Do they not make these anymore or they just won't answer your calls?
They won't answer my calls. I mean, the last resort I have, I'm going to probably have to drive up there and see if I can talk to someone in the office.
Where are they?
They're in Northlake. Yeah.
Is there something similar called it?
Well, FPNL has the ones that look similar to the ones that we have, but they don't have a lens on it. And that's the only other issue that I have. I can't have an open light because it'll be really bright. They do have one. It's called a Victorian, but it just doesn't have the lens cover on it, the frosted lens. Say again, I'm sorry?
Can we get a lens cover?
No, they don't even make it for it. Trust me, I've been on this for about a week.
Can we?
I've been, I've been digging, I've been digging and digging to see if I can find something similar to it.
I'll tell you what, we'll come, we'll come back to you in September with some answers for you. Because you've thrown out some possibilities and we'll see how we can.
If I even have to drive up there on Monday, when I come in on Monday, I'll drive up there and see if I can speak to someone in our office. See if they can give me some sort of an answer in regards to the cost of the lights and if they can even, the availability of it. It's just supposed to an answering machine when I call. And the times that I have spoken to someone, they refer me to the person and even on a voicemail, they don't return a phone call either.
So, Anthony, this is a good business.
Maybe we'll actually find a totally different design that is similar and worthy of the Town Hall being.
So, let's defer this to next month to get some more information. All right, moving on.
I'm sorry, but let's find out whether the fire provider of lights is a reliable source. Because we may need to now transition to a totally different vendor, light, whatever. I was assuming we could just add to what we have, but you're telling me we may not be able to do that.
I won't know until Monday when I go out there personally, so.
That's the only thing I'd like to know.
Mayor, can I have my glasses?
Have these?
Yes.
Sorry, you continue.
Yeah, no. Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, there are two things that I wanted to discuss with you on the budget today. And one, you did receive some background material for the police officers' salaries. As you remember, talking about the budget back in July and even back, I think, the month before when we raised the starting salary. At that point in time, I told you that we weren't done dealing with the, the police officers' salaries, knowing what other towns and cities were in the process of doing, and that was developing their own budgets and/or completing contracts with their union regarding the police salaries. So, over the last couple of months, our chief has been collecting that information again. And he created this memo to everybody. And I hope you've had a chance to look at it and if you have some questions, you can obviously ask them. Now, essentially, these, these different blocks here show you again, the, like a three-year officer, five-year sergeant, 10-year officer, seven-year sergeant. The blue shows you, now, these are all, these are all 2024 numbers. In other words, so, so there, yeah, so therefore the new upcoming budgets. And so, if we were to, if we were to move forward with what we've already approved or that we anticipate improving in terms of a COLA, this would be, the blue line would be where Gulfstream compares to the other departments. Using the work that the chief has done, the numbers in red are what we are proposing to you to do for our police department. And that puts us basically right in the middle.
Blue to red.
Yes, and the red. So, so my comment generally about that is, I think, I think when we approved that new starting salary, I think that was in June, we were recruiting two of the officers that we talked about today. Am I correct, Chief?
Yes, sir.
And I think that that decision helped, helped them choose to come to Gulfstream. Am I correct?
Yes, I believe that helped motivate them to come here.
Okay. And so, I mean, my point is, it seems like we have to do this, you know, every two or three years with respect to police departments. But we want to stay competitive with the other cities. And it's been a challenge, as you know. We were, when, when the chief came, we were down to nine officers. He made 10. And in the time that he's been here, we've had, we've got, had three hires. And so, I think that's, I think the red would put us in a healthy position to continue to, I mean, we've hired three good officers. And I certainly don't want them to, to leave.
Well, it was kind of our consensus at the last meeting. I think, Joan, you said we need to, we really need to address this. Make it attractive for police officers to come and to stay. So, Chief has done extensive research and put together a very thorough analysis of what he believes we need to do that, so.
I'll also say, and I won't talk too long here, Mr. Mayor, at the end of this memo, you can see other opportunities that the mayor had, that the chief has developed to provide incentive to our officers with extra responsibilities. And I think that's very creative on his part. And, and the other thing that I'll mention is that over the next year, we, he and I would like to develop our police department with a step plan that has defined starting salaries and top-out salaries. Most of these other towns and cities and their police departments have step plans. And so, that's why you see some of their officers, you know, are at higher salaries than ours. And so, that's just something that we're going to work on over the next year.
So, all the new proposals that the chief has recommended, we don't have any of those in place now?
No, sir, we do not.
Education experience, okay. And you're proposing those, are we adopting those too if we agree on these pay changes?
Yes. Those would be, would not be a significant impact on the budget at all.
Two of primary importance, I think, are the last two, the emergency medical technician and the paramedic, which, since our police officers are generally the ones on-site after emergencies, medical emergencies, before the ambulance arrives, it behooves us to have some trained personnel, trained police officers. Chief himself is a, you're a trained DMT, I believe.
Yes, sir.
So, we certainly want to encourage that. So, I thought that was a great idea for our demographic anyways.
The cost of this, I believe, is between $60,000 and $70,000.
Mayor, as you suggested, the chief has done an incredible job, very comprehensive, thoughtful, logical, persuasive. I don't know what else to say. I mean, this is kind of quality work is really. So, thank you. And the recommendation, I certainly am a big supporter of. You know, one of the things that this last three, four years we've been lacking is adequate number of police officers. And you've done a lot to cure that problem. And I think this will, less turnover also, at the end of the day, is, is, it's better for the residents. It's better for town staff. It's better for the mission and it saves a lot of money.
Absolutely.
Way to retain them, not just hire them.
Yeah.
Got some younger ones. So, uh, I think this goes a long way to solidify our position, um, as a town that has permanent, long.
Do we take action on this or?
No, this, this will, this will, uh, this will be reflected, uh, when we come back in September.
But we're all in agreement with, yeah.
Chief's recommendation.
That's terrific.
Okay.
Okay, so the se- the second, uh, issue about the budget is, uh, uh, we are recommending and, uh, Mark, uh, would agree with our staff that we create a, uh, capital improvement project fund would be like our, uh, undergrounding fund. Uh, or the penny sales tax fund, which you see in our budgets. They're, they're all, uh, part of our total budget. Uh, and so, uh, to us, uh, it would be more efficient, it'd be, it'd be more accountable. It would be easier for the town commission to see our expenses as we, uh, work on our, our capital project that we're going to begin here, uh, in, in the new year. And, uh, so the two changes that will be reflected, i- if you agree with this, uh, would be, and I have this out on the table for you. That would be the second page of the colored, colored documents and it would be under the roads and streets. Uh, if you can see down at the bottom and the, the last, uh, line item would be transfer out capital project fund. Uh, so originally we had five million dollars in the street, uh, roads and street, uh, department. So we're gonna transfer that out to, on the next page, you'll see the, uh, capital project fund and how it will, uh, appear.
So is this really just relabeled?
Yeah, it is. It's creating.
Taking it out of the fund balance to?
No, no, it's, no, it, it does not change how, how.
It would, it's creating a whole new fund. So the whole project for the governmental side is just gonna be keeping track of the project in its own separate fund. So it's not commingled with all the general.
Right, but this money's coming.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. From different. Yes, to a different.
It's still coming out of there.
Is the five million you anticipated?
Yes.
Outlay.
For the twenty-four, the year twenty-four.
Yeah, you have the reserve.
That's your best guess.
Carrying.
Correct.
They put the venture tax revenue, which you're gonna transfer to the separate funds. Yeah. You can see the debts and credits.
Yeah, yeah.
How often do you transfer it out, just in chunks of five million or?
Oh, no, it, no, it would be one transfer.
One.
A- and then all the bills would be paid out of that.
Right, but that'll, we're gonna end up with more bills than five million.
Yeah, you, you would just transfer it as needed.
As needed, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, there's one thing I want to say about the water fund if, uh, because I, I have been getting questions about it, uh, from some residents and that, that is that sixty-dollar fee that is on our water bill. That's a, a reserve fund, uh, that was, uh, started in two, uh, ten, two thousand twelve. And, uh, it originally started at thirty dollars per bill and in fifteen, we raised it to sixty dollars. We have not spent any money out of that fund, but we do intend on using some of that for our capital improvement fund. But the amount that, uh, will be in there, uh, uh, by the end of September of this year is one point two million dollars.
Okay, it's that much on the sixty-dollar charges?
Yes.
Well, over the years.
Yeah. You know, on that subject, uh, have you reflected on whether we should be adjusting it? For today, but I, I think that, uh, periodically we should be looking at that because obviously.
Well, okay, so that's a good point, uh, because we are gonna be spending some money out of it for the first time. And so we might, we might contemplate that, uh, to try to, you know, re- rebuild it, uh, after we spend money out of it. But I do get some questions about that and most of them have come, uh, from a place also.
Was it put on permanently? It was, it was, it was indefinite?
Yes.
It held up the water funds.
But there was no.
Yeah, we're spending it exactly for what it was created for.
We'll see how it goes over a couple of years. If, uh, the balances remain high, we can, uh, readjust it.
Right.
Sure. Yeah, sure. Uh, all right. Thank you very much, um, Mr. Don, uh, ARPV meeting. There is no meeting in August. Next one will be September twenty-eighth, eight-thirty, for anyone who wishes to attend. Uh, finance, uh, reports, water reports.
Yes, uh, on, on either of those reports, uh, there, I don't see anything unusual unless you have some questions about them.
Any questions?
There's one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't sound quick. No, okay. It, it was, okay, it, it's under revenue. It was federal grants and we had budgeted four hundred thousand dollars and we've got zero. What's going on with it? That, why are you, Trey?
No, I, I can answer that. I can answer that. No, because we have not, we have not spent any money out of that. That's, those, those are ARPA funds, right?
Yeah.
So we have not spent any money out. We, we received those funds a couple of years ago. It's been on our budget. We, we actually had it divided up. I think we budgeted two hundred thousand dollars last year. We didn't use it. Uh, and, uh, there, there's actually four hundred ninety-six thousand, but in the budget, we put four hundred thousand. The reason it's all there is because we haven't spent any of it.
That's my only question.
And so, yeah, so, uh, but we will be using that towards, uh, uh, our.
CIP.
CIP project.
Very good.
Thank you.
Chief Jones, please report.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much. We appreciate your support and, uh, obviously we ask that you accept our report as submitted. If you have any questions about it, I'll be more than happy to answer those or any other questions you have about the police department.
Any questions? Nope, not accepted to submit. Uh, let's move on to ordinance twenty-three slash two. It's the second reading. Renee?
In ordinance of the Town Commission of the Town of Gulfstream, Palm Beach County, Florida, amending the town code of ordinance is at chapter twenty-two, nuisances, article two, unsightly, unsafe or unsanitary conditions. Section twenty-two thirty-one prohibited, chapter sixty-six zoning, article five, site plans, division two, architectural site plan review levels one, two and three. Section sixty-six one forty-one applicability and chapter seventy, Gulfstream Design Manual, article five, area-wide standards. Division three, general landscape standards, section seventy-one forty-eight principles. And adding at chapter seventy, Gulfstream Design Manual, article five, area-wide standards, division three, general landscaping standards, a new section seventy-one fifty-two. Artificial turf providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, providing for codification, providing an effective date upon the second reading, this eleventh day of August, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Ordinance twenty-three slash two has been brought to us for adoption on second reading. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve ordinance twenty-three slash two.
Seconded.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwyne?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Morgan?
Yes. And we have resolution twenty-three dash one.
A resolution of the Town Commission of the Town of Gulfstream, Palm Beach County, Florida, establishing water rates and charges by resolution as provided in town code section thirty-four twenty-six, rates and charges for the operation of the water distribution system for the town, providing an effective date of August eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
So our motion to approve resolution twenty-three dash one.
To approve resolution twenty-three dash one.
I'll second it.
Ms. Bezos?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwyne?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Morgan?
Yes. Uh, comments by Commissioners?
Uh, one question, um, uh, when will we be able to kind of update on, uh, your, our effort to, um, review our design manual? We've been, but I know you were talking to a consultant, maybe he wasn't available.
Uh, no, I mean, do you want me to speak on that?
Why, why don't you address that, uh, briefly, because I think it needs to be considered for next month's meeting.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Nizaro and I did meet with probably the, uh, county's, uh, expert on massing and, uh, floor area ratios. Uh, he's the planning, or he's the former planning and zoning, uh, official for the town of Palm Beach. And, uh, he's now retired, but, uh, Palm Beach just could not get rid of him. So now they've hired him as a contract employee and he still works forty hours a week. Anyway, we met with him and I think we've mentioned him to you before, but, uh, uh, so he, he looked at our codes and, um, he, the first words out of his mouth is that, you know, if we want to deal with massing, we're gonna have to deal with, uh, our FAR. And, um.
Yep.
And he said that Palm Beach has been dealing with this for years and Palm Beach, Palm Beach actually has a different method of determining FAR. Uh, it's a, what is it? What is it called? A triangular?
Cubic content ratio.
Yeah, cubic content ratio. And he said, not even their employees like it. And so I think they are actually trying to amend that. Uh, in fact, I do think Palm Beach. I think Palm Beach is, uh, doing a major change in their zoning codes and that may be part of it. But that was his comment to us, uh, you know, with the size of our lots and, and, uh, and our codes that, you know, one way to address it is dealing with your FAR. Uh, the other, the other, uh, method that, uh, we talked about, Trey and I and the mayor and, and with Paul is we may, uh, uh, be able to address that, uh, dealing with setbacks. Uh, trying to encourage one-story homes, uh, perhaps reducing, uh, reducing the setbacks that is required of a one-story home, perhaps from fifteen to twelve. Uh, to, you know, encourage again, the construction of single-story homes. Uh, and then increasing the setbacks for two-story homes, uh, similar to, I mean, we all liked the presentation by the house at thirty-four hundred. Uh, Polo, uh, uh, one reason was because the front door was fifty feet from the edge of the pavement. And so it, it was backed it off the, uh, and it's a very large house and it backed it off of the edge of the pavement. So those are two things that, that we, the staff, if, if you want us to do a deeper dive into, uh, that, that we would suggest that we look at.
So I think what, uh, we, we should think about, and not debate it today, but to think about it for next month is, do you want to address FAR? According to the expert, that's really the only way you're gonna reduce massing. We have tinkered with it. We've played with the edges of it and, you know, done some good things, but you're really not going to address massing without addressing it, uh, FAR. Do we want to do that? That carries some risks, some legal risks, if it impacts the valuation of property. It may or it may not, but it's something you want to consider. The other issue and/or is setbacks, particularly in the core on the, the landlocked side. Do you want to push the setback for two-story homes back further and allow, uh, perhaps three feet difference on the side? But a single story, keep the same setback and allow the extra setback, uh, the reduced setback on the sides. So that you encourage single-story homes, but if you go with a two-story, it's pushed back further from the road. So think about this over the next month and let's debate it on, uh.
If, if we could also address, and I know we've talked about this, the first floor elevation is going up and the height of the buildings and how we might try to cope with that. That's another subject.
Good point. Right. We, we've mentioned that before, particularly because of the, the elevations now required. Do we want to reduce roof heights?
Is it possible to reduce this, um, massing with architectural details or some, because it seems the blockier the house, the bigger it looks. I mean, is that possible or not? Because I like our, I mean, I don't have a problem with the FAR. Our, our town's grown in a positive way, but I think it's when you get these really blocky architectural design houses that verge on.
Oh, that's a very good question and it's one, admittedly, we did not cross paths with, with Paul and we can certainly do that.
Because thirty-four hundred is a typical example. They kind of gave it some architectural details to not. And also there's another house in town that no one would even know it's as big as it is, um, that they could compare different houses to. But it's really the architectural design too, in my opinion.
Oh, no, it's, I, I would absolutely agree with you. The question is, will it accomplish adequately the whole massing issue? Certainly it can improve it, but will it get to the level we would like? Uh, I think you suggested we talk about this in more depth, because I have some views on, on that subject.
Yeah, we don't, don't have time now.
Oh, no, I just was thinking about the architecture.
So, so we essentially have four areas now to look at.
Yeah.
And it, it, you guys probably don't recall, but we, we met, when I first got here, we met with, I don't know, seven or eight architects that worked in, in this area and talked about the subject and, and one thing that we talked to them about was reducing the height of the ceilings on the second floor and it was a unanimous vote not to do that.
Well, but you're asking the wrong.
I know. I know.
Man, I, I don't know how you don't address roof height with the raising of homes due to the flood standards.
Eventually, they're all gonna be raised.
So.
I mean, it's like hurricane impact, we're just boarding them up. I mean, eventually everyone's gonna be okay.
Okay. Uh, any other comments? Thank you, Paul.
Yep.
If not, thank you for coming.